All right, at six thirty, we'll call Monday, May twelfth, twenty twenty five, City of Mayor, City Council meeting to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any additions to the agenda tonight?
One item to add tonight, Mayor. Under the consent agenda, moving the next council meeting, May twenty sixth, to May twenty seventh, as the twenty sixth falls on Memorial Day.
Perfect. Thank you for that. And I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda with the one addition to the consent agenda, number eight, to move the meeting from May twenty sixth to May twenty seven due to holiday.
Motion.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries four zero. With that, we'll open for public comments. If there's anyone who would like to discuss anything that is not on the agenda, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comments and move to the consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that needs to be pulled for further discussion? Hearing none, then I'll just want to make one comment on number six for the claims. It will be for April and May for the last meeting in April that we missed, so it'll cover claims for both of those.
True.
So with that, I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda with the one addition from the earlier motion.
Motion.
Second.
Well, motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Post same sign. Motion carries four zero. With that, we'll jump right to summer hours for staff.
Thank you, Mayor. Each year, the city receives a request from city staff to open or change from normal hours to summer hours, which usually takes the form of Monday through Thursday, seven AM to four thirty PM for a nine-hour day, and then a half-day on Friday of seven AM to eleven AM. And this year, we're requesting to begin summer hours on May nineteenth and then go until September twelfth, which is a twenty twenty five, not twenty twenty four. So, May nineteenth to September twelfth of this year.
Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve the proposed summer hours from May nineteenth through September twelfth.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? My only comment on this is I certainly love summer hours. I just feel I'd like to maybe stick with kind of what the intent of summer hours is and maybe go from Memorial to Labor Day, certainly not this year by any means, but I just feel that it just lines up more for what the intent of is. But again, as me and Nick talked, there's certainly nothing I would oppose if Nick feels this is fine for the staff I'm aligned with, and it just seems to make sense to me. But so with that, with no other comments, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries four zero. And with that, we will move to the quote, remove trees from City Hall.
Thank you, Mayor. Around City Hall, we have eight trees that we are recommending that we have taken down. Six of those are ash with two maples. Take a look at the aerial photography here. We have the boxes here in red on the northeast side of the property. This one, last year during one of the windstorms, it's got some deadfall in there, and it's begun stabbing branches down into the rubber membrane when we had that windstorm, which caused about seven hundred dollars in roof repair damage. So we're recommending this one come down to prevent any future damage caused by that. We have six ash trees, one, two, three, four, five, and six here, which we've had companies come out and take a look at. All of a sudden, they likely have emerald ash board, taking a look at them. They have quite a bit of dieback on the top of them, indicating death of the tree. And then the maple here, while it's still in okay condition, I looked at it today, and it does have on a few of its top canopy branches, some dieback occurring there. So we're recommending removal of all eight. And then, not pictured here, on the south side of the property, we have some trees just north in this area, three trees, and we're looking to have the company come in, trim those up with the deadfall that's in that area, and then also do treatment to those trees because they are still salvageable.
Will you be replacing any of the trees?
The trees on this north side, we're going to, well, we have the baseball club donation as part of the splash pad, so we're going to plant trees in better locations around there.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know.
Yep.
And the three of trimming and treating, are those part of the quote, or would that be addition?
That, so, to the quote, obtain three quotes to do the work. Discount Tree Care of Waconia came in at eight thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. That includes all of the work I just mentioned.
Perfect.
Shorewood Trees Services of Watertown also includes all of that work, and then I was able to get one from Minnesota Tree Boss Waconia. That is just for the taking down of trees and the trimming, however, they don't do the herbicide and treatment work. So this is sans the treatment work.
Perfect. Good. I just wasn't sure if those were add-ons to trimming. All right, any other questions? Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve the contract with Discount Tree Care of Waconia for eight thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars for tree removal, trimming, and treatment. Thank you.
Do they grind his dumps to them?
Yes.
Good question.
Motion.
A motion, do we have a second? Motion, a second. Any further discussion? And I think it's due, it's time to pull out some of those. It'll give us a good opportunity to make it.
Clean it up.
Maybe not only trees, maybe some landscapes, some bushes, some different things to, you know, make it look really nice over by the splash pad. You hate to do it, but it comes to that time, and the one up against the City Hall, I certainly agree with what the damage we've already had, and we could incur more after just replacing that roof, I think. Obviously hindsight's twenty twenty, we probably should have looked at it then, but certainly agree with that. So with nothing else, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries four zero, and that will take us to City Council reports. Councilmember Health, anything to report on?
I had a planning commission meeting, still going through the language for updating the planning and zoning.
With the project?
Well.
Going with?
The overall, the whole. Trying to blank, no?
Zoning code?
Yes.
Okay. Perfect. Councilmember Faustian, anything to report on?
We haven't had a meeting since our EDA, right?
No.
Okay, so we did an EDA meeting a couple weeks ago where we picked the grant applicants for the businesses in town, and I think they've all been notified.
Yep.
Yep.
And those were all awarded, correct?
Correct.
From our last meeting?
Yep.
Perfect, thank you. Councilmember Jackson, anything to report on?
Nope, our meeting's for a night, and I think we're going to discuss some of it tonight, too.
Perfect. And I have nothing to report on, as my last two personnel committee meetings have been postponed. I should have something by next, next meeting. So with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. We are adjourned. So with that, we will jump right into the workshop.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Metzold is here, and will be giving an update on the Fire Department one twenty fifth celebration event updates. We're going to go over the plan as we have it. As long as everything's looking good, I would anticipate at the next council meeting, you should see agenda items for intoxicating, temporary intoxicating liquor license, special event permit, and then road closure request. So with that, I will turn it over to Chief Metzold.
All right, so for our one hundred and twenty-fifth celebration, we are proposing to have, so date is September twentieth that we're looking at. As of right now, looking to start around two o'clock in the afternoon with basically an open house, display of trucks, station, probably have some kid activities and stuff to be, that they can do. We will be serving burgers all day. We're also going to have a pork chop dinner, pork chops that we're going to be selling. We've got two different bands that will be playing, one starting around four thirty, seventy-three paces, which has donated their time to play. From what I understand, most of them on that band are Ridgeview Doctors, and so they said they would donate their time and play for us. And then the second band, Bling Foreplay, which would play from eight to eleven. We have got a map drawn out of where we were going to have stuff on the, so as we asked about kind of containment of, as we plan on serving beer, we're going to have everything kind of on the north side of the property. On the south side is probably where we'll have our trucks displayed or whatever, but at, I think we've talked around five o'clock or six o'clock, we plan on shutting all the station doors on the south side and keeping everything then to the north side, kind of enclosed. The, so looking on the top left-hand side, those little orange boxes would be Biffy's. Just to the right of that, the blue little spot would be where we would be serving beer. Those rounds are just tables. We've got the light blue square box is where the first band is going to play. They said they didn't need a stage or anything, they were just going to play on the ground. But then we have got the bigger, blue, long rectangle there would be a stage for the main band to play on. Down in the bottom, in the corner of the station, would be where we would sell food. And then there's tables along that front apron. We'd also have some tables set up in the bay itself. And then a couple little stands in the front there. We plan on selling some T-shirts and items, and then one right along where we've got the kind of orange, where we will kind of gate off that is where people would come in, and then we would ID them for wristbands for purchasing alcohol.
And I assume these are like your little barriers here?
Yeah, correct. So that we would, so most of that is fenced against Public Works is all fenced there. So like I said, we would, with closing the station off on the south side at that point, and then we would have a fence just on the front side to kind of have things contained.
Just like that plastic fencing, right? Steel fence, something like that?
Correct.
A barrier?
Yep.
Okay. Perfect.
Did I miss it, those brown boxes up front, is that like Biff's or something?
Say that again?
Yep.
Those, yeah, would be Biff's. We have spoken with all the people along Shimcore, all the businesses there, we have spoken to them, letting them know when we're having this and stuff. The thought or, one concern was with, with parking. So in doing that, we want to have Shimcore Street just a one-way street, close it off coming, you wouldn't be able to enter from thirty, but the only entrance would come in by Casey's. And yeah, kind of stopping the, or starting the one way just east of Casey's there, so people can get in and out of Casey's easy enough. All the other businesses are mainly the businesses that are only used during the week anyway. And so we would create just a one-way so that we can very easily park cars on both sides of the street, possibly angled, so we can get more parking in there. A number of businesses did offer either A, their empty lot, or part of their, you know, parking lots themselves for parking for the event as well. The Great Plains Mini Storage, right there, that big open area between us and there, he said we could park vehicles on there. Like I said, and another, a few, a number of other ones had said that they'd be willing to let people park in their lots.
And what's the plan for alcohol? Will it be just beer, or will you have beer?
Beer and.
Like seltzers and?
Yes.
Not hard liquor, you won't, no? Good. And will you need any other volunteers? Is that, do you guys have enough out of your group?
Lions have reached out and offered their assistance, which I'm sure will take them up on helping out in some ways, but.
I can certainly be available if there's anything you need for someone to do anything, pick up garbage, do whatever, it doesn't matter. If you need another person, certainly let us know.
Sure. Any other questions on any?
That's great, no, I think it's great. I like the plan, thought out. Now, do we need security?
No.
No?
No. I don't have a concern over that.
No, and I don't either. I mean, yep.
Especially with it having a barrier for the alcohol.
Right.
Tom Koppel will be on that day anyway, I'm sure.
Right, yeah.
So.
Yeah. No, I think it's a great plan. I, I'm all for it.
Absolutely.
Any other questions for Andy? Now, it'll still be, this will still be open down here, right?
Yep.
For people getting out, for exiting. Yep, yep.
I'm working with Carver County to see if we can't get the turn lane shut down here just so people don't accidentally try to take a right.
Right.
Or pass through.
Yep.
Trying to think of those little extra details to make it as safe as possible.
Good, yep. Cool, cool. No, I think it's well thought out.
We also, so along the front side of the station, we will leave those parking spots there open for handicap.
Oh, sure. Will you need anything from Public Works on there for any of the parking, for maybe fire department, I mean, like city parking or?
You know, possibly barriers or something like that with, you know, closing off one way and.
Yeah. I meant, I meant more this, the space, like if you needed for like your, all the firefighters may be parking in there.
Possibly for some of the, either A, firefighters, or B, the band will have some sort of truck or whatever that, with their equipment that they'll come with, that they'll need somewhere to park.
Yeah, because I think opening up for things like that seem to make sense.
Right.
Just to free up other spots.
I can certainly use our Public Works lot.
Yeah.
To park whatever they need.
Right, right. Good. No, I'm looking forward to it. It's a good plan, and certainly keep, keep Nick in the loop and whatever we can help with and he can help with. It's.
I'm curious, what happens if you get a call?
We will have one crew dedicated to help or to run medicals and stuff, but other instances where we've got, we'll have probably New Germany most likely on standby, that anything comes, they would be, you know, called for assistance right away.
Which is common for anyone doing any festivals and sorts of things, so. Perfect. Good. Looks like a great plan. I appreciate you coming in and then going over it with us.
Sure.
Thank you. Any other questions for Chief? Perfect, thank you, Andy.
Yep.
All right, we will move to review utility shut-off schedule. Do you want me just to toss it right back to you? Jump in there. So I just want to re-discuss the schedule, partly because of my mis, and if you don't want to stick around, Andy certainly don't, partly because of my misunderstanding of what my intention was when we first brought this. I thought, I was under the impression we'd kind of have three months before any notice, but not thinking through enough of one of the months as a back, you know, we're behind a month. I feel the way it's set up today, we are get, we'll be sending out shut-off notices one month earlier than what I had anticipated happening. And we saw that with one of the residents where that happened. So if, if someone doesn't pay March,
They're going to get a shut-off notice in April.
Then they get their next one, and if they're a couple days late on that one, then the notice is there, and they're really, and.
It happened to me, actually.
You guys probably have the dates better, where you could explain it better where.
Yeah.
But I feel we, we missed one month. My intention was that one more month in there before the notice went out.
So I'll, quick recap of how the schedule is there now.
Because when you explained it, it made, that it made sense to me.
So we'll take the current months. May, for example, everybody should have just received their utility bills probably last week.
Yep.
The due date is going to be June first. If we don't receive payment by June first, you'll get your second bill. Now, you've missed the first month. Now, the second bill goes out, that will include the disconnection notice that says if you don't pay by July first, you are subject to disconnection.
Right.
And then what we do after that is then we'll put the door hanger on the door that says forty-eight hours after this is on your door, and we'll put the date and time it went on, then we'll come, come by to shut off.
And it makes sense, but I will, I, I mean, I get how it's going to be confusing because, I mean, I paid my right, I was like, oh, shoot, I forgot to pay by the first. I paid it, but I was really shocked to see that delinquent, you're going to get shut off right away when we were like two weeks, not even a week late, but, or I guess it would have been two weeks, yeah. I was like, oh, I just forgot to pay it, because I'm not used to it. So I can get why probably people in town are probably like, oh, my gosh, you shut me off already after one month. That's how it comes across, even though that's how it isn't how it is.
Right. And I know that for me, that was my intention to not have it the way it's set up today. I think I was thinking April, because your May is paying April, so I think I was thinking April, May, June, which was three months. I think that's where the confusion for me admittedly came from. So I'd like to propose we move it, think about, I mean, if you've got any questions on it or what thoughts are, or some direction for Nick, but I just think it's a little soon to get that notice right away, personally.
And all that would take is a simple amendment to the ordinance.
I don't know, maybe they'll get their butts in gear to pay it on time.
I mean, it made me pay it the day of, I was like, oh, shoot.
Yeah, and I, and I think we've made great strides. We got it back to the first of the month. We don't have the grace period. I think we're going in the right direction, but I don't think the intent was to put fear.
Right.
Pay, pay it now. A lot of it was to not have that end of the year, put it into assessments through the county and some of that. I, now, I certainly wouldn't be proposing, let's go nine-month grace period, but I, I think three seems to get a shut off, because there's some fees with that, and, and I know obviously staff will work with people, too, when they call in, they have that, they have that to work with people, but.
There's just so many that are lax on paying it. I don't know, maybe, maybe they get the notice. I don't, I don't know. I, I, I don't understand, because you could literally drop it off up here.
Well, and to be, I mean, again, to play devil's advocate here, I mean, I usually am on time all the time, but for some reason, I thought I paid it by the first and didn't, and that's why. But then I, as soon as I got it, I paid it, I was like, oh, shoot. So I don't think it's always, you know, granted, I've been wanting to get it set up to be automatic anyway. I don't know, I think people just get busy. You know, all my other bills are online, and they're all, I don't know. I get what you're saying, though.
I'm, I guess I'm fine either way, but just.
Would you want to see some data? Have we had any shut-offs?
Not yet, but that's somebody was to follow up with today since I've gone this week, since I've gone last week.
If we're not really having.
Have you had a lot of calls on it?
But, and even though if we're not getting them, you know, that would maybe warrant, well, let's not change it, because we're not, but it's that, I just think it's a little aggressive to be getting that notice that soon. I'm not saying we shouldn't shut off at a certain time and do that.
Yeah, like the follow-through is a good thing to be doing.
Yeah, I think we do that. I just know for me, I was off a month.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's, let's get a few months' worth of data. Has there been a lot of notices that went out? If there is, maybe leave it. If there isn't, then lax it. I don't know.
Have there been a lot of complaints?
That's what I was asking.
I only know of the one.
Right.
I don't think we've gotten very many complaints. I think there was people who misunderstood the grace period.
Right.
But I think when we explained that you're getting just as many days as you did before, that put a lot of people at ease.
Lot of face.
And for me, I'm not proposing anything because of we had a resident. I'm pretty much, I've always stood, I don't change many policies for one person, you know. It just opened my eyes to realize, oh, wait a minute, as we talk through it, and then I talk with staff, and it's like, well, that wasn't ever my intent.
Well, that's what it did for me when I got the notice.
So I'll bring it up, I'll bring it up, and not.
I'm fine either way, it doesn't make or break me.
Yeah.
And it's not going to make or break the city, so.
No, I think we're making good progress on getting things shored up and, you know, getting things in order. I, I think we've done the right things, but, and if we want to wait a couple more months and, and see how things are, but I just know for me, it was, I was, didn't think it through.
If, if we didn't do the shut-off notice until like technically the second month.
Right.
Would they still have, they still would get a late fee, though, for being late, correct?
Yes.
So I feel like they're still getting.
Penalized.
Penalized for being late, but then maybe not such like a fear factor, like you said.
I think it's aggressive, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, that's fine.
All right.
Agreed, I had to be cruel and pay the late fee.
Three months.
I will draft language for three months.
Yeah, let's, yeah, go extend it out, however you got to draft to extend it out one more, and then.
Yep, so what that'll look like is at the next council meeting, I'll have it as an agenda item, introduction of the ordinance change, updated to go from two months to three months.
Perfect.
Sounds good.
Good, I appreciate it. Thank you all. I appreciate that. So we'll move to number four, discussion on renewal of waste management contract.
Thank you. Five years ago, in August, we signed a contract. My understanding is the city went out for an RFP for waste management services and selected Waste Management as the new hauler. That contract is coming due from its five-year period, so I just want to have direction. We can certainly renew the contract. There's no requirement to go out for an RFP. If we're satisfied with service, we can simply continue renewing the contract.
They're cheap, they're efficient. I like their pickup days, their, their junk days. I don't know, I haven't had any issues.
I'm very satisfied with them.
I'm the same where you're at. I haven't had any problems with them. I mean, get some numbers from, now if they're triple all of a sudden, then we have to look at something, obviously, but if they're still in line with kind of the increases we've been seeing.
I think it's like fifty-three bucks every, like, three to four months, and I got the two big containers.
We have a tote that broke, and they fix it like the next day, so.
They're fabulous.
Good, and a little background is, we did have waste management for many years.
Yep.
Then went out for an RFP and got some other company that wasn't so good, and ended up going back to Waste Management, so.
Think we stick with what works.
I think we'd shown change wasn't. My only thoughts are, and I'd have to, I don't even remember how, if we put it in the contract or not, but I thought when we signed this one, we were going to try to get some sort of report or some sort of, some sort of, I think, report from them on an annual basis, because one of my concerns was they handle all the phone calls. We don't know if our residents are not getting the service they need, if they're not getting treated right, if they're, we don't know, unless someone happens to call one of us to say, hey, I called Waste Management, they treated me pretty poorly, you know, and I haven't gotten those calls, but that's just one thing, so it's hard for me, are they, you know, we, we always go under low responsible bid, why are they still responsible?
Right.
Yeah, they're picking up our garbage and doing it, but we don't know the customer service side of the things.
But usually, I mean, somebody, if, if there's usually an issue with something.
We typically.
In some way, shape, or form, we hear about it, and I haven't seen or heard anything about it.
And I would agree with that with, with, with social media now and how people want to light up social media.
Right.
I, I, my gut tells me we would have heard something.
Yes.
Yeah, and they must have changed their route or how they do things or whatever, because we did get a nasty gram that our stuff wasn't out before seven AM, which it's which it's never been in five years, and they are serious. But they came back for us the first like two weeks, and then we learned our lesson. But now you drive through Hidden Creek and everyone's got their stuff out Wednesday night.
I always, I've always put mine out the night before, because you never know.
I'm sorry. And the community loves the yearly.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Cleanup.
My gosh.
That's a great bonus.
So do other communities.
Stuff on my curb after they've already picked it up.
There's so much traffic in town for that week.
In our neighborhood, too. Everything we put out there was gone like.
Oh, yeah, it's gone before the.
My stuff was gone the Monday before cleanup day.
The swap is that they're selling my stuff.
You know if it's still there. It is junk.
Yeah.
It's like, oh, wow.
No, I think my only thing would be if, like you said, if their pricing is suddenly out of line or whatever.
I don't see why it would be. I mean, there may be something. I don't even know if they run diesel anymore, but they know we had some diesel charges on diesel one out, but I think they're probably running clean, cleaner trucks now, I'm guessing.
Yeah, it's all propane.
Or moving towards that, yeah, so.
But I'm sure we'll get updated when they come back with the new contract, with the new pricing this.
Yeah, I'm fine. I, I don't think, I wouldn't want to go for RFP right now. I think we learned.
Blessings addressed.
I'll try to fix things if they don't need it.
Agreed.
All right. Perfect. Sounds good. So I have, perfect. That's all we need then, and we will adjourn.
Enjoy your Saturday evenings.
Did you initial these?
I initial them.
You did?
Yep.